To go ahead and bring to order the concurrent regular meeting of the Sonoma City Council and the Sonoma City Council as a successor agency to the Dissolve Sonoma Community Development Agency. So first of all, I would like to go ahead and have Liam O'Driscoll come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Liam. All right, and how about if we proceed with roll call?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Here.
Mayor Gallion?
Present. All right, at this point, we're going to go ahead and open up for comments from the public, and at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Ann Ray. It's spelled W-R-A-Y, and I live in Glen Allen. I'm from the group at the Methodist Church that's concerned about housing in Sonoma Valley. I'm going to read a portion of the open letter that our group sent to city council last week. It was also sent to the local media. Shelley will finish the letter so we don't go over our time limits. The letter is dated February 11th, 2016. Dear councilmembers, at your January meeting, we heard loud and clear that every one of you wants to make affordable housing a priority. That's great. Now, how do we do that? For nearly eight months, our members have appeared at almost every city council meeting requesting that affordable housing be put on the council's agenda. So far, that has not happened. Our request followed well-attended bilingual forums at both the Sonoma United Methodist Church and El Verano Elementary School. We summarize the community's concerns and its proposed solutions in our resolution for a housing state of emergency. Copies have been in the hands of the council and city staff for some time. In a poll released last week in Healdsburg, a city much like Sonoma, more than 70% were concerned about the lack of affordable housing. 71% were upset that outsiders were replacing long-term residents, and 86% said they would support increasing affordable housing. We suspect that the same is true in Sonoma. The comments by the crowd that turned out at the planning commission hearing on the proposed hotel between First and Second Street East suggest as much. The city of Alameda recently adopted a moratorium on large rent increases and no-cause evictions while it studies the affordable housing problem. We have delivered copies of the ordinance to city staff and to a number of council members. We wonder if the same couldn't happen in Sonoma.
Thank you.
Michelle Ritchie, R-I-C-H-E-Y, 215 East Watmore, Sonoma. Continuation of the letter. The city manager has told us that until directed by the council, she cannot spend staff time on studying the community's proposals. Even if she could, she says, she has insufficient staff to move ahead in what we consider a timely fashion. She has suggested we get in line behind the mobile homeowners, who after many months will see their rent control taken up in March. The patience of the mobile homers is admirable, and we support their campaign to strengthen rent control in the mobile home parks. But we respectfully submit that justice delayed is justice denied. Sonoma households spending more than a third of their income for rent, and sometimes more than half, can't wait. Families being pushed out of their homes and neighborhoods by vacation rentals, can't wait. Those of us working in town for less than it takes to rent a place in Sonoma or the Springs, can't wait. The families doubled up in apartments and houses because it's the only way to keep a roof over our heads, can't wait. Nor can the folks sleeping in Maxwell Park. How many people have to leave town before the council acts? If it takes meeting more than once every two weeks, let's do it. If it takes hiring more city staff, let's do it. If it takes working with the county, or even turning it over to the county, let's do that. We know you want to move ahead. Let's do whatever it takes. Therefore, we respectfully request that the council hold an open public hearing at which we can formally present our concerns and proposed solutions, and others can do the same. We request that, with all due deliberate speed, the council adopt a moratorium on rent increases and no-cause evictions while it works out longer-term solutions. Declaring a housing state of emergency would show that you are serious. And this letter is submitted by the Spiritual Action Group of Sonoma United Methodist Church and the Sonoma Valley Housing Group. For more information, contact me, and the reason my name is there is because I wasn't at the meeting when they wrote this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Good evening, councilmembers. I think the rain kept a lot of people away tonight. Anyway, the city council guides and directs staff and the various cities' commissions. One way this is done is via the city's council goals. As you know, the goals include affordable housing, and I've heard all of you, on multiple occasions, identify housing as a top concern. The city municipal code requires a residential component in development on commercial and mixed-use property on a half an acre or more unless waived by the planning commission. There are various developments in progress within the city. I encourage the city council, through a resolution or other means deemed appropriate, to direct the planning commission to not grant such waivers except in extreme circumstances. It's much better to be proactive on this rather than wait for an appeal to come before the city council after such a waiver is granted by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Wagner, 540 Fano Lane. Came to talk about a couple of things, which actually the last two speakers just touched on. Maxwell Village is having a little park plan meeting right now, so I think I'm going to try to go over there towards the end of this meeting. I went walking through Maxwell Park, one of the proposals to get a disc golf course in back, and admit I went a little off-trail, but there is actually already trails through most of the park. And I found a couple shelters, not like little campments with some beer bottles, but like clothes strewn through the trees to block through wind, and like these are dwellings. People are living back there. And that just highlights our lack of, one, shelter for people, and then just housing. I had a phone call last week from a constituent, a friend of mine who was part of this mass notice-to-quit, want to say 375 West Napa. He says 40 people. I talked to a few people who live in that complex, and this is all month-to-month leases, so really, there's no legal way of stopping it, but it just does kind of highlight that we don't really have any tenant rights beyond what the state grants us. The city of San Francisco has more than what California does, but there is still kind of limited. They'll give, I think it's $5,200, you have to pay someone if you evict them through the, or not evict, you ask them to leave through the Ellis Act, which is taking property off the market. I think the only reason you're asking people to leave is to up the rent or sell and make a profit, that you need to compensate the community. I mean, these are people that are working in town that now are not going to be living in town. And if this is the topic that we're talking about, then, you know, we got to fix that. So I think that that definitely has to be a part of this discussion when it comes to housing. And as far as getting this done, at the planning commission meeting, I did bring up the idea. I know that you guys have talked about it, or the councils have talked about it, having a town hall meeting, maybe we could have one with the planning commission, and we can listen to the community and create a priority list of what we want, and even talk about a few specific plots of land out here that might be developed in the future. And yeah, I think that's about it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close public comment and bring it back to our agenda. At this time, are there any meeting dedications?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I do have a dedication. I'd like to dedicate this meeting to Lori Weber Hutchison, who passed away January 27th, and I wish our condolences to her daughter Kate Leary and her spouse Owen, son Tucker, her mother Ruth Weber, brothers George, Paul, and Steve, and her husband is Bill Hutchinson. They were a very active couple. She was a very active person here, along with her husband. She was part of the early board of the La Luz, and she also was a volunteer school builder in El Salvador. Her profession, of course, was a human resources person, and she also worked for Sonoma Mission Inn. I know that she will be sadly missed. She had a wide circle of friends, and I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other dedications? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentations, of which there are none scheduled. Next item would be the Consent Calendar and Agenda Order of City Council. All the items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Okay, all right. Yes, did you want to say anything? Okay, there we go. I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to create any action at this point, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for motion or discussion.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we need any further discussion? All right, then let's go for the roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Yes, all right. We'll move on to Consent Calendar Agenda Order, City Council as Successor Agency. There were no items for tonight. There is no public hearing, and we have again moved to our regular calendar, item 7A. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on options for a compromise ordinance to limit the use of leaf blowers within the city limits. City manager, I believe you're going to start with this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallion, members of the city council. This item is returning from your January 20th meeting, when the council gave consideration to placing one or more ballot measures on the November ballot to allow voters to decide the final outcome of this issue. Most public input that evening urged the council to refrain from a ballot measure and revisit the issue with a focus towards a compromise ordinance. Following public comment, the council took up the issue of placing a leaf blower measure on the ballot, and after council deliberation, a motion was made to place a measure to ban all gas-powered leaf blowers on the November ballot. The motion failed on a two to three vote. No further motions were put forth, and the issue was closed due to inaction by the council. At that point, councilmember Cook then requested a future agenda item to consider a compromise ordinance to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. Tonight, the discussion is being brought forward for a compromise ordinance to wrap up all issues. In an effort to begin the discussion, staff has prepared a basic draft ordinance that incorporates the basic tenants of a compromise. Without going through the draft ordinance that is in your agenda packet, I'd like to go through the major points that are listed in your staff report in summary. So these are the bullet point items that's in the staff report, and the first is the type of equipment allowed, and this ordinance would completely eliminate the use of all gas-powered leaf blower equipment within the city limits of Sonoma for all users. All areas of the city would be open for use of electric or battery-operated equipment. Number two, hours of operation. The hours of operation include Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., except on city holidays. These have been the hours that have been most recently discussed, but as you'll note in the staff report, council could consider aligning leaf blower hours with all other residential power equipment, or vary those hours as you see fit. Addressing the noise level, under noise levels for consistency, staff is suggesting that the operation of leaf blowers shall comply with the noise ordinance, including the decibel limits applicable to residential power equipment. For enforcement, under enforcement, both the property owner or tenant and the landscaper each will be subject to the penalty provisions under the ordinance. The fine that is imposed for violation of the ordinance will depend upon whether the violation is prosecuted as an infraction, misdemeanor, or administrative violation. And the enforcement date, the effective date of the ordinance, if passed on a first and second reading, would be 30 days following the second reading. But staff is recommending a delay of enforcement to allow for a transition period. Staff calculated basically 90 days for implementation, which would be July 4th. The council could change that enforcement date to any date it actually chooses. As currently drafted, this compromise ordinance would be efficient in enforcement. If adopted, this new ordinance would supersede all prior regulations. The proposed draft is also silent on the requirement for marked vehicles due to the redundant nature of this stipulation. Under our new code enforcement regulations, complaints can be filed utilizing vehicle license plate numbers. This will also eliminate the need for our city prosecutor to conduct site hearings to advise landscape contractors of the signage regulation. Elimination of this requirement will free up the city prosecutor's office for more pressing matters. So the draft ordinance is submitted for your consideration and discussion. And so staff suggests that you take public comment, and should the council wish to entertain this draft ordinance or changes to the draft ordinance, direction should be given to staff and then potentially agendize for a future meeting. That concludes staff's comments, and we're open, the city attorney and myself, for questions and comments. Thank you.
Questions of council to staff? All right, councilmember Edwards?
Carol, can you tell me how many police calls we've had on leaf blowers since January, and then an estimate of how many we've had over the last four or five years that we've been dealing with this?
I don't have the cumulative amount, but basically just, I did discuss this with the chief of police, and just in the most recent, since the recent discussion of this, they've had approximately 30 to 40 calls.
Okay.
And then our city prosecutor has conducted approximately 10 to 12 site hearings with the landscape community regarding the signage on trucks.
So no arrests or anything like that?
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, councilmember Hundley.
I have two questions. What is the decibel limit for residential power equipment?
70.
70. And this is probably for the attorney, but what's the difference between whether it's prosecuted as an infraction, misdemeanor, or administratively?
They carry with them different penalties. An infraction, the first infraction can be, infraction, first of all, is a criminal prosecution, and the first infraction carries with it. I believe it's a $100 fine if it's committed. Again, in a 12-month period, it's 250, and if a third violation occurs in the same 12-month period, it's $500. A misdemeanor can be fined or penalized with up to $1,000 in fine and/or six months in county jail. Administrative fining process, there are penalties assessed that depend on the nature of the crime, and those are handled internally at the city level.
So with the involvement of the code enforcement officer, which would that, so administratively wouldn't involve that person, or would it?
I think it might. I think if the city, I would suspect that, as this ordinance points out, the first offense is going to be responded with a letter, saying, "You need to stop doing this. Here's a copy of our ordinance." Then, the next violation would be treated, I think, depending on the nature of the violation, did it appear to be willful, was the homeowner out of town, and the person who did the leaf blowing maybe hadn't been communicating with the homeowner, and he or she was blowing leaves for five minutes before it stopped. That might be simply, again, that might even be a sort of a reprimand, or maybe another letter that would go to that person. So I think it's going to take two or three violations by the same person, who clearly had knowledge of the code before the city decides which avenue to take. If it takes the administrative avenue, then likely, the code enforcement officer would be involved.
I wasn't sure if, Mayor Protem, and then back to councilmember Edwards.
To our city manager today, I came by to visit you with respect to the meeting back in January 5th, 2011, and it says here, it was moved by councilmember Barbo, seconded by councilmember Rouse, to implement an ordinance that would prohibit a person from blowing debris into the street or onto another person's property, and the motion carried unanimously. And you assured me that that would be on our guidelines. Is that what you said? Well, depending on what the... Depending upon the outcome of this evening. Yeah, that would be put on, it would be our intent that if it's not contained in the ordinance, which it is not contained in this draft ordinance, that whatever ends up potentially being passed by the council, that all of, that the ordinance would go out probably in basically a summary form, or, you know, to all residents and businesses to, basically, we'd probably send it out to all of our utility customers, so they're aware, plus a best practices, which would also include that provision, because that would be a best, it would be a best practice at that point. And are you saying it would make it to the guidelines? Yes, correct, correct. Thank you.
Yes, councilmember Edwards.
So for the city attorney. So Jeff.
Yes.
So, you know, with all of this stuff going on, I've done a little homework. So we went out and did a little test with a steel rake, and a steel rake across the street from my neighbor is 90 decibels for a steel rake on the street, so when the leaves fall, all of leaves in front of my house. So if you go out and rake, and it's 90 decibels, and you get a complaint, is that going to fall under the same issues as the leaf blowers?
I'd have to take a look at the noise ordinance, which unfortunately I do not have in front of me, so I'm not sure what kinds of noise producers would be subject to it. If the noise ordinance is drafted broadly, and it says any instrumentality that generates noise in a residential area above the threshold level is a violation of the ordinance, then yes, that could be prosecuted, just as any other producer of noise. But I don't know whether or not our ordinance defines the sources of noise limitedly or in a more general way, so I can't really precisely answer your question.
And while you're checking that, could you check the hours for the use of a leaf rake on cement? Thank you.
Any further questions of staff?
I'm sorry, I do have another one. I believe the suggestion was 8:00 a.m., and the starting time was 8:00 a.m., and I actually was thinking about 8:30, 8:30 to 3:00. So I don't know how, where that ends up in all of this, but that's what I was thinking.
I was just going to say that we would probably have that come back to us, and we could be discussing that here as council, but I think my one question is on the code enforcement officer. When do you see that individual being in place?
Well, we're meeting with the city prosecutor, actually. On Tuesday, we have a meeting set to discuss the progress made, but he is working on his recruitment right now, so we're looking at probably, he's looking at 60 days.
Okay.
So, before the implement, you know, well before the implementation date, if this ordinance moves forward, but he's looking at, his date to me was 60 days.
Right, and then the question would be if, in the event that we were not able to reach consensus tonight, under the old ordinance that we currently have for leaf blowers, the code enforcement officer would be adhering to the old ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct, because that's still in effect.
Okay. Mayor Protem, did you have a further question?
I wanted to know if there is a job description yet put together, or that's something you all are going to be working on? On the code enforcement officer? He is working on, he is working on that now, but that would, again, would be through his office. Okay, and that's something we'd be able to review? No, that, because, I mean, it's his, it's his recruitment. Once he has that done, yes, I will distribute it. I would distribute it, but it wouldn't be approved by council. Okay, thanks.
All right. Do we have any further questions of staff?
No.
All right, with that, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please remember, when approaching the podium, to state your name, spell it for the record, and your address.
Jack Wagner, W-A-G-N-E-R, 540 Fano Lane. Thank you for getting this together. This has been my position since the beginning of campaign last time even. Georgia can confirm that, that this is what I committed to, that I would support this compromise. The specifics of it aren't as important as getting this ordinance done. I think this will help resolve this issue, as long as both sides. This is what landscapers told me that they would be resolved with, this is what the people against the leaf blowers that wanted a full ban said that they would be content with. I know they're being successful getting them off the schools, and I think that's important. I just want to thank mayor for their leadership, her leadership on this.
Thank you.
And I'm glad I won't have to deal with this in the next election or term, if I get elected, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jack.
Hi, Sarah Ford, East Napa Street, Sonoma. I, first of all, want to really thank the city council for considering this compromise ordinance banning gas blowers. It avoids the divisiveness of a ballot measure and means that any change in the future, if any, is much more easily accomplished. I was confused to see the 8:00 a.m. start time in the draft ordinance, and I would strongly encourage you to start at 9:00 or 10:00, 9:00 at the earliest. That's, 8:00 o'clock is when kids are walking to school, biking to school, boarding to school, whatever. And although electric blowers stir up much less particulate matter, they still do stir some up. That's why the school district, when they banned gas blowers a few months ago, they said, "No electric blowers within half an hour of kids' arrival, and not until they're gone for the day." So I'd encourage you to think of 9:00 or 10:00, and as we discussed in the past, all the same hours and all the same zones for simplicity. 9:00 to 3:00, or 9:00 to 4:00, 10:00 to 3:00, 10:00 to 4:00, whatever. There's also a footnote in the draft ordinance that I believe the city manager did allude to in her comments, that in my view, it talks about aligning the construction hours with leaf blower hours, and I think that's a big step backwards, because it's the opposite of the ordinance's intention of compromise. That would extend the hours, and it would actually even add on Sundays and holidays. So I would urge you to reject that idea, but I think that allowing Saturdays is fine, and that's fair. I think Sundays and holidays shouldn't be in the ordinance. I think Sundays and holidays shouldn't be in the ordinance. I think that Lynn Clary is going to go into more detail about a few things that many of us feel should be in the ordinance to keep it from coming back to the council. One of which would be disallowing gas generators. You guys can think about that and discuss it. It was in the 2013 ordinance. One was disallowing backpack-style blowers, because once they're on... they're hard to get on. Once they're on, they tend to stay on and get used as kind of the default mode. Another was, of course, as Councilmember Agamonte discussed, the not blowing in the street and not blowing into neighbors' yards. Since I have an extra minute, I think, I want to mention the signage, too.
Forty-five seconds.
Came up... Oh, is that countdown? Oh, okay. The signage, I think, is a simple, inexpensive way for landscapers to identify themselves that allows somebody to call the company, whether it's Waldron or whoever, as opposed to bothering the police. So I would consider keeping that rule, especially with the ideas about the magnetic signs and whatnot. And there are a whole bunch of reasons why that number of citations is really a red herring. People don't like to call on their neighbors. Brett Sackett told me there's no record of a call if you're anonymous, which they offered to you when you call, or they used to. Or if they cannot send a deputy out, there's no record of the call. So you can ask Brett Sackett about that. Often, there is no deputy sent out, because they have more important things to do. And so I think that that number needs to be viewed as it's pretty fuzzy.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Lynn Clary, and I believe I've been speaking to most of you and sending you letters. And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of putting into this ordinance, making it not just a guideline, but illegal to blow debris into the street or onto your neighbor's property. This has been one of the main complaints since this thing started way back in 2010, actually. And I'll give you a little story of... A couple of weeks ago, I was at the corner of Fano Lane and Robinson, and Waldron's men were operating on the corner house. And he's working real hard up against the house, trying to get out what few leaves were still there, and he did. And his buddy was working near the sidewalk, bent over pruning. He blew all those leaves into the side of his friend, partner, whatever you want to call him, passed them on both sides, all the way out into the middle of the street. I mean, he had to turn it all the way up to do that. Then he's chasing the leaves up and down the street, trying to get them in a pile and pick them up. If we make this illegal, I mean, he had a perfect opportunity to do it on the sidewalk, or collect it in the front of the yard or the driveway. But he just did this carelessly, gets the cars dirty. It was actually dangerous, what he did to his partner. These people clearly have no supervision. I feel sorry for them. It's dangerous. The other thing I mentioned is the backpack-style blowers. They weigh nearly thirty pounds. The people that work next to me on their yard, they set the backpack on the tailgate of the truck. They back up to it, they put their arms in it, they adjust the harness, they adjust the belt, and it's on. And then they start blowing, and they keep on going till they're done. Then they go back to the tailgate and take it off. It is not that convenient to take a backpack blower off and switch to a rake, or a shovel, or whatever's more convenient to use or more appropriate. It's just plain simpler to keep it on your back. They were nearly thirty pounds, they're bulky, they're unwieldy. And I actually feel sorry for the guys, and I don't know why they use them so much. It's totally unnecessary. And I just wanted to point out one thing about Councilmember Edwards' little test. I wasn't invited to the demonstration, but in my neighborhood, nobody uses a steel rake on concrete. We all use brooms, because it picks up all those little pieces of dirt and stems and broken-up leaves, so we can get a cleaner sidewalk and a cleaner gutter. The rake is effective on the grass and in the dirt, and then those kinds of things. So I've frankly not seen a rake used on concrete in my neighborhood. Anyway, that's what I have to say, so please, please consider these points. And thank you for bringing this back and talking about it.
Thank you, Lynn.
Evening, council. Mayor Gallion, I'm Georgia Kelly on Mitchell Way in Sonoma. First, I want to thank the council members for all the time you've taken with this issue, and hopefully, and especially for the three of you who have come back to the ordinance to do a compromise with us. This is wonderful, to keep this from going back into a contentious debate between people for another year and up to the next election. So I want to just publicly appreciate you and acknowledge you for what you've done by bringing this back to an ordinance. And secondly, I want to revisit the hours again, because that's come up a couple of times. And I think what Sarah said about the schoolchildren walking between eight and eight-thirty is probably a very good reason to start the blowing with electric blowers at nine o'clock. Maybe nine to four would be a reasonable amount of time for people to be able to do their gardening. So I would suggest looking at restricted hours, and that would be the Monday through Saturday, and the Sunday and holidays being where they don't use any blowers. And I also would encourage you not to connect this with the construction hours, because it would make it much longer, more days, and it would kind of defeat the purpose of having this ordinance. So I would encourage you to look at keeping it with the restricted hours and days, nine to four, something like that, on Monday through Saturday. So thank you.
Thank you, Georgia.
Josette Rose Iker, 1110 Loma Court. "I was verbally attacked at a New Year's Eve party by a resident of the city of Sonoma. He told me in no uncertain terms that people like me from the springs and the valley should keep our noses out of city business. It prompted me to write a little letter to the IT on how we're really all in this together. With the school board banning gas-powered leaf blowers, and hopefully tonight, the city doing the same, I feel this is our first step to getting the county to seriously consider doing the same, one step at a time. As to this not being important, and there are more important things to do, well, hopefully after tonight, those words will not be said again. But this is important, and not something to be trivialized, nor is it a joke. Another quick personal story. On Tuesday, I had all the sliders open with the warm weather. I rolled my yoga mat out on the back bedroom floor by the slider. I put on my essential oil diffuser and lay down to do my exercises from the physical therapist. On my first in-breath, the neighbor's gardener started up his gas-powered leaf blower. So much for fresh air and relaxation. If you think this does not affect you, and it is trivial, you're kidding yourself. I would urge anyone who thinks it's a joke to try this. Get a recording of a nice, loud, gas-powered blower, give it to your spouse or someone else, and ask them to turn it on in about ten minutes. Sit down, close your eyes, try to relax, or maybe start reading a book. See what happens to your mind and body when they switch it on. It is very important that this ordinance is well-written, so I would urge you to include wording on a start time of nine or ten. Banning generators... banning using generators to power electric blowers, banning backpack-style blowers, and prohibiting blowing into streets and neighbors' property, or prohibiting blowing on the streets. This will make the ordinance clear and easy to enforce. I want to thank you for addressing and bringing this back up. Instead of going to a ballot measure, this is a great step forward. Thanks very much."
Thank you, Josette.
My name is Phil Busalachi, B-U-S-A-L-A-C-C-H-I. I live at 244 Pena Avenue in Sonoma. I read this, the draft thing, and it looks pretty good. I did have a question, and the use restricted section, number one, it's 9.60030. It says, "Is unlawfully for any property owner, including the city, you know, to use the leaf blower." And then we go to exemptions, and that's in 9.6004B. And it says, "Capital improvement or repairs, maintenance on public property by employees or contractors of the city." So to me, that reads like, we say, the city can't use them, and then in the exemptions, we're saying that they can to come and do a park in a neighborhood. I mean, I've been up here a few times, and, you know, if you're going to do it for one, you're going to do... you have to do it for everybody. And if it means ten thousand dollars for the city, you know, everybody else has got to... You know, we just don't have as many machines as them. Also, I'm looking... I don't know if you can put this in here, but, you know, if we go a year down the road, and somebody brings this back up, here we are again. Maybe there can be... I don't know if you can write this in there, that it's ten years or something, so we're not dealing with this in another year. You know, otherwise, you know, I mean, I'm willing to give up my gas leaf blower. But, you know, I think every... you know, if I have to, you know, the city should have to, and they should set an example. Also, backpack blowers, I guess if we ban gas blowers, we won't have to worry about them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and answer that question when we finish public comment.
David Iker, E-I-C-H-A-R, 1110 Loma Court. "I use a bamboo rake when I rake up my leaves." Anyway, I agree with Lynn and what the others have said, including banning backpack-style electric leaf blowers and prohibiting blowing leaves on a neighbor's property and the streets. Councilmember Agamonte even mentioned these in the city council meeting on January 20th. And the leaf blower guideline already states that the debris should not be blown onto the neighboring properties or into the street, so why not put it into the code? The current ordinance on leaf blowers allows them to be used in residential zones, Monday through Saturday, nine AM to four PM. So why change the start time to eight AM, an hour earlier? It's the wrong direction. I reviewed the video of the January 20th meeting, and the eight AM to three PM time that was city council approved on a straw vote, excuse me, on September 9th, it was, was for the commercial, mixed, and the public zones. It wasn't... had to do with the residential, because remember, at that time, there was supposed to be... we're discussing complete ban on the residential. So anyway, also, the current ordinance for leaf blowers in commercial districts, et cetera, they're prohibited Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. And with the new one, you are now going to allow them on Saturday. Just want to make sure you know that that is a change there. And so I'm asking you to do what's right and fair, and approve the restrictions on leaf blowers, include not blowing debris on the neighbor's property, no backpack... no backpack-style electric leaf blowers, and no use of generators to power electric leaf blowers, and allow the use only... everywhere only between nine AM and three PM, not starting at eight AM. And also remember that, and this also came up with the county, that it is very difficult to enforce noise ordinances, because, as they explained, that the officers, the sheriffs in the county don't carry decimeters. And even they did, they had to be trained on them. So if you just... if you put the ban on gas-powered leaf blowers and specifics, then it'd be very easy to say, "Oh, that's a gas-powered leaf blower, or that's a backpack electric one. You're not supposed to use those." And that's very easy, rather than to say, "Oh, you know, did you exceed the seventy decibels or ninety decibels or anything of that nature at a specific time?" Thank you.
Thank you very much, David.
Lisa Summers at 252 Newcombe. I just have a couple of points. I just want to support everything that's been said so far. At one point, especially the kind of caveat for the city being able to use gas-powered leaf blowers, it's kind of long been my opinion that the city of Sonoma should be taking the lead, and anything that's kind of a greenhouse monster, like a gas-powered leaf blower, and also deciding voluntarily not to use glyphosate-based pesticides. I'm not sure why the city is lagging so far behind other communities in taking initiatives towards banning the use of Roundup and gas-powered leaf blowers by our own staff. So I really encourage you to not include that exception for the city. It really isn't fair. The other point is that there are, in development, battery-powered leaf blowers that come with a backpack that are going to be just as loud as gas-powered leaf blowers very quickly. So I think the backpack language is important, and I think you've received a lot of letters from us about why. It seems trivial, but it really isn't. And on the use on hours, there's... there are two enormous houses going into my... The field next to my house right now on Newcombe Street. And waking up to skill saws at eight o'clock in the morning on a holiday is no fun. I mean, this goes on all week. I think, you know, the construction hours is really a bad idea. And I think if we can get there, maybe we can stop coming to these meetings, and we can start working on other things like affordable housing. And I also just want to reiterate my thanks for bringing this back to an ordinance rather than a ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Hello, my name is Mark Janofsky, J-A-N-O-F-S-K-Y. I live at 663 Donner Avenue. First, I want to also thank the council for considering this ordinance again. And I want to second the comments of the previous speakers regarding please not having the leaf blowers used before nine AM, not allowing gas-powered generators, and not allowing blowing material into the street or on neighbors' properties. And finally, I did want to say that at the previous meeting where you discussed this, Councilmember Edwards said that he would not support this ordinance, because he's convinced, or he believes, that if you folks ban electric leaf blowers, that someone will just collect signatures and get it for an initiative on the ballot. And I really, really doubt that anybody is going to go to the trouble to circulate a petition to allow the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. And now, if you were banning... if you were going with the original ordinance and banning gas and electric leaf blowers, yes, I agree with Councilmember Edwards that you would surely have people trying to get it on the ballot. And I do believe that a vote of the public would probably overturn this. But I really, really sincerely doubt that anybody's going to bother to go to the trouble simply just to reinstate gas-powered leaf blowers. From everything that I've heard, the landscapers are fine with using electric ones, so let's just be realistic here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else wishing to speak? Going ones?
Hi, I'm sorry, Roger Bowle, B-O-H-L, 1220 Brockman Lane. A little late to this party, but I did want to add a thought or two. One is that, having discussed the issue of electric motors, and I am highly electrified myself, I'm told that the landscapers have difficulty with the electric battery-operated blowers, because they need to do it throughout the day, and batteries have a weight problem or a need to recharge, and then you have an issue of recharging, perhaps with a mobile-mounted charger system. I frankly don't find the use of gas blowers on some restricted-hour basis to be unreasonable. And, boy, I understand, I'm probably a little late to this party. I would support the use of gas blowers with reasonable hour restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Caroline Wampole, W-A-M-P-O-L-E, 366 Patton, Sonoma. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but it looks like I might be the last one, and hopefully, this is the last meeting about this. So I just wanted to say something about the process. This is less about leaf blowers and more about human beings and leadership. I joined this group because I had a problem, a real one, in my neighborhood that was preventing my ability to work, which I think is fair. Other people joined for other reasons that dealt with their health, real issues, not fake issues, not trivial issues, not issues that would be... should be dismissed. We're a group of citizens that came to the city council with a problem. I think that is what the role of city council is to deal with, and I appreciate the fact that that is what is happening tonight. What I'd like to say, though, is that in the last meeting, Mayor Gallion, you mentioned leadership. And I want to say, I think there's a difference between leadership and obstructionism. And I think there's a difference between leadership and dismissing the concerns of citizens. We are luckily not in Flint, Michigan, but I hope that if Sonoma has environmental problems of that level in the future, and citizens get together, as they have for this leaf blower issue, and come to the city council with their concerns, they will be met with respect and not dismissed by certain members, and not told that their issues are trivial and to please go away, or that they're to blame, because we have a compromise on the table. I've enjoyed this process, and I hope that tonight we will come to a nice close. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? And I'm going to... Then I'm going to close it for, um, public comment and I will be awaiting the answer on that item if you have it for the public. That was the 9.60.04. I think it was the B that he was talking about.
Actually, we were, we were, that's what we were just conferring on.
Do you need more time?
No, no, actually, we, we do, that, that should have been removed because that, that doesn't, the city will comply with, with that. We will, we would not be removing the A part on emergency, obviously, emergency response vehicles because it, it could be on mutual aid, but we would be removing B. So we would ask that the council does remove that because we intend, we intend that the city would comply with those.
Now, do I have this correct? If, this could be my, my question and then I'll open it up to other council members. We discussed that in an emergency situation, this would be for fire.
Correct.
You know, any type of things that deem absolutely necessary and this would be for city only, all right? That a gas powered leaf blower would be used or would not be used?
If they have them on, because we use mutual aid response, if there are gas powered leaf blowers for a cleanup of an emergency scene and they have them on their emergency vehicles, that would be allowed to be used. But that is not considered maintenance. That is response to an emergency scene. So that is why that provision is in there.
Right. So A would stand in that section?
A would stand in that situation.
Thank you.
And that exemption would not simply be limited to the city.
Okay.
It would apply to the fire department, to highway patrol, whomever is responding to an emergency.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmembers, questions? Discussion? Okay, uh, Councilmember Hundley.
I'm going to keep mine short because I think I'm coming down with stomach flu, but, um, so when this came before the council a year ago, the, the top issues were particulate matter and, uh, at least inside of this room, that was a big discussion. And then when I talked to people outside that supported some sort of ban, it was mostly because of the sound. I think that a lot of people who would like to see some sort of ban in the city just think leaf blowers are really annoying. And then emissions have been mentioned every now and then, but it's almost been as an afterthought. So in approaching this whole idea of a compromise ordinance, I started thinking about the goals that were initially set out as accomplishing and whether those would actually be accomplished with a gas ban. And I did some research about leaf blowers. I looked at a lot of websites that review them and rank them for people who are looking to buy them. And I noticed that the, the data, it sometimes varies, especially when it comes to sound. But I found ones for 2016 best leaf blowers, um, of the top 10 on the list, four are electric. And I was interested to see that for noise level, um, the lowest for the electric alone is 86.2 decibels and the highest is actually 97.4 decibels, which seems pretty loud. And in fact, looking at the same list comparing it to the gas on here, there's, there's not any gas that's louder than, there's one that's 97.9. So they're basically the same when it comes to noise. And then I found a more extensive list that compares things like sound and then even miles per hour of the, you know, wind that comes out of it. And for gas powered on this list, the decibels range from 70 to 100. On this electric, it ranges from 50 to 70. But also interestingly, if you look at the miles per hour on gas powered, it ranges from 150 to 250 miles per hour. But if you look at electric, it also ranges from 150 to 250 miles per hour. And I also started thinking about, you know, electric technology, uh, batteries. If Tesla can build a battery to ba, to power a house, um, I'm sure that batteries for appliances like leaf blowers and everything else is going to improve greatly in the next few years as it has with everything else. So I don't really see the difference between the two with the exception of the issue of emissions, which I don't think that that has been the discussion here. And if we would like to have a conversation.
Excuse me, there's no comments from the audience.
If we want to have a serious conversation about emissions, I would be happy to have that conversation. I think that it should be a lot broader than, you know, focusing on one thing. We can, uh, you know, address a package of things that might actually make a big difference in the city. So based on this, I don't see any support to single out gas powered leaf blowers and at least accomplishing the goals that were mentioned when this all started. And on top of that, we now have our new code enforcement officer program that I'm excited about. I think a lot of us are. And having a route to enforce the ordinance that we have, I think is going to, um, be a great asset for the city and for people who felt like they haven't been heard before now. Um, and last thing I'll mention, well, second to last. I have here, someone has sent me, it's a model leaf blower ordinance that I was looking at. It doesn't, doesn't include any kind of ban, but it does have ideas like every three years, if, uh, someone's operating a leaf blower for remuneration, so they're making money off of it, then every three years they have to, uh, attend training by the police department, um, to get, I assume it's probably linked to their business license somehow. But when I talk to people about this issue, a lot of times people say it's lack of training that really creates the problem. So I see the source of people's frustrations being things like lack of training, um, people not knowing what the rules are. And then for things like sound, uh, we have a sound ordinance. Um, they actually make a lot of electric leaf blowers that are now louder than our sound ordinance. So somehow enforcing that would be, um, a better start than, you know, closing the door on one type of instrument but leaving open another that's just as loud. And the last thing I'll say is that I've heard from a lot of people in the last couple of months on this issue and people who either like leaf blowers, don't like leaf blowers, but the one common theme that I'm feeling is that people are, they feel this issue has been discussed and it is time to move on. So I am not supporting this ordinance. I don't think that it's solving the problems that people wanted to solve in the first place. And that's where I'm going to leave it.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Cook?
Well, I'd like to start off saying that I've sat through a lot of leaf blower meetings and I've heard different council members, uh, publicly talk about different issues and everything else. We are bringing this back tonight to discuss, um, what are we going to do? I've heard everything from people say, you know, from blowing to the street to, um, why it's best to have electric leaf blower versus a gas leaf blower. But in the end, there was one thing that I always knew, probably five years ago when this first started and I was sitting in the nosebleeds there. The one thing I wanted to see is I wanted every, everything to be treated the same. I wanted, um, public works, mixed use, commercial, residential, across the board, the same. So I do like, um, the comment that came from the public on the, on the exemption. I understand it. It's, uh, um, you know, we had, we had talked about that a while back and, and, you know, removing B is understandable. But there's mutual aid and under emergency situations. I'm here tonight for one reason. I was elected by citizens of the city of Sonoma to take care of the needs of the city of Sonoma. And I'm sure tonight I will hear from my, some colleagues saying that this is a non-issue. Well, it is an issue because even if there's one person out there that has something to say, they're welcome to say it here. Gas leaf blowers versus electric leaf blowers has always been a big thing in my mind. Electric leaf blowers are a tool. I'm a farmer. I understand a lot of tools. I understand roofers. And this has all been talked about in the last five years. So I always wanted the leaf blower to be able to be used. But with that said, I understand the compromise of gas leaf blowers. Banning gap, the gas leaf blowers is not the end of the world. I think we'll look back in a year and say, you know, it wasn't that bad. I want to go through the points really quick and say, you know, how I feel. And with that, I do want to thank city staff for doing a great job on this. I think you picked up most of the, um, key elements of our last discussion.
If I could just interject here, David, I'm, I know that you have that right there, but I really wanted to hear from other council members and possibly do a straw poll on those items.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I'd like to go ahead and call on another person if you are finished.
That's fine, okay.
You're good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, who would like to speak next?
Do you want to go?
So I was listening to our council member Hundley and, um, I don't, I guess I'm confused because I looked up on my phone, emissions. This is what has been discussed over and over again. I even learned what the word particulate meant. I didn't even know where there was such a thing. So emission of air, emissions of air pollutants, notably flu, flu gas, gases existing to the atmosphere via a flu, exhaust gas, flu gas generated by fuel combustion, so on and so on. And that's where I hear the compromise. The people who have brought this issue to us, along with the other things that are going on with respect, said they're willing to compromise. They're willing to accept this. The emissions, excuse me, the, um, electric blower because of those emissions. They have made a compromise. I think that I'm really pleased about that. I personally, um, as I said, had a circumstance when I ran for office that was terrible, that, um, that somebody was using a blower. He was totally, uh, protected. He never cared that we were walking in that area, five houses. The whole thing was full throttle. He could throttle. He could care less about me or my husband. So, um, I agree with, uh, what Councilmember Hundley says. It is a training issue. But we reap what we sow because here we are. They don't follow these directions. These guidelines, because we don't have a code enforcement officer, um, really are not enforced. And those are, I think that's why I feel very serious about what we're doing here. And I just wanted to remind us about that.
Councilmember Edwards?
I guess first of all, I'd like to ask, uh, Councilmember Aggermonte, who are they? Are you talking about the Mexicans or the people?
Sir, I'm Mexican, so it's okay.
I'm just checking, okay?
Mr. Edwards, could we keep this to, um, actually your opinion and not questions of other council members?
This is part of, part of my opinion.
Well, then I would, I would say you should address it to all of us.
I, okay, I'm addressing it to all of you and I'll address this issue to all of you. So I keep hearing this word compromise and this paperwork came out on Thursday night about a compromise. And a compromise comes from people meeting together. And from what it sounds like is that, um, Lynn Clary talked about meeting with you. The last few times, the small group that we have here has come to meet with council members. They, I know they haven't met with me. I, I checked with Councilmember Hundley and they haven't met with her. So it sounds like three of our council members have had a meeting and it, I don't know if it's a serial meeting or if it's just something where opinions are being formed back and forth. And, you know, um, I'm not an expert on the Brown Act, but it, it, it smells a little fishy to me. I'm going to start there. So that's addressing, um, the entire council here. You know, the, the issue about emissions, I know that was, that came up, particulates and so on. But I did, I've done a lot of research because actually every single event I go to, everywhere I go, uh, including people from Sacramento and Washington, um, they, they always have a little giggle about our leaf blower issue, which seems to be taking over our affordable housing, um, issues and homeless issues and things that, um, have a much higher priority in my mind. Doing a little research, Americans throw away 3 billion batteries every year, 180,000 tons. I brought a couple. These are from my, my electric leaf blower. I'll put them up there. Famous for bringing props. So what happens is when these things wear out, then you have to go get another one because they don't hold the charge. Last year, 14,000 tons of rechargeable batteries were thrown away in the United States. 86,000 tons of what we throw away are single use batteries. So what we're talking about, it, it also costs a lot of fuel to, to make these things. It looks like it's made out of, uh, fuel because it's plastic. I'm sure they're shipped from China, which takes enormous amounts of fuel. And so here we are, we're going to celebrate by having this electric, um, leaf blowers, which doesn't really solve the original issue that, that came up. And I've, you know, there's several people here tonight, but I've had dozens of phone calls and emails late into the evening last night and, uh, almost every issue comes up about leaf blowers. Going back to the times on, on this agenda, construction times, there's construction going on everywhere in Sonoma. We all get a report as council members of what's, uh, permits that are out there, what's going on. I don't see changing that issue. I went back through and I asked staff to give me, um, we, we kept hearing about, um, petitions, signatures. I got the first initial petition that was handed out and I just did a quick search of the zip codes. And it goes every, on 17 out of 18 pages, there were zip codes that were Houston, Santa Rosa, Lano, California. I don't even know where that is. Kansas City. The best one was, uh, Mr. Ponton, Jeff Ponton from Great Britain signed the petition. Let's see, Louisville, Kentucky and a couple of places, San Leandro, Juneau, Alaska, um, Midland Park, New Jersey. Let's see, there were a couple from North Carolina and South Carolina, San Mateo, Larkfield, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. So, you know, not, petitions do matter and, um, I understand people at, at, uh, markets are going to be, uh, opened up because thinking that our Tuesday market is a, you know, organic farmer's market kind of thing. But, you know, we look at it and, uh, we use generators there in the market. We have, you know, it's, it's like impossible, all these issues going back and forth. But, you know, I go back to the promised buyback program. We haven't heard another thing about that. I actually do listen at all of these meetings. The cost of the cities, the city expenses, legal expense, staff time, I'm guessing it's probably, after all these years, probably somewhere around $100,000. And I'm sure staff will correct me if I'm wrong. We talked about kids walking to school. You know, I live right next to Presswood School and 90% of the people drive SUVs to Presswood School or drop off in cars and so on. Mayor Gallion, you work at a school. I'm sure you see the same issue. You know, changing the time and putting this, um, added burden on the entrepreneurs that are out there trying to make a living, trying to do their thing and being less efficient. You know, I had, you know, over the past several months, we've had people say, oh, let them use leaf rakes. So leaf rakes take, uh, you know, incredible carpal tunnel issues. There's all kinds of things. Major corporations would never allow it. You know, in the school system, they have lots of other issues if we see the recent press this week about, uh, fights and other things that go on in the schools. I'm just, I'm pretty disappointed in, in the overall conversation about it. Like I say, I'm not, um, we voted five to zero, um, a couple of meetings ago to put it on the ballot. Miraculously, we changed that. Not quite sure how that happened, um, but I guess the cards will fall where they fall. So I'm not going to support this. Um, I think we have much bigger issues. I talked to the folks outside about affordable housing, um, the work that's been done by, um, citizens in Sonoma to try to help certain people in town. Um, that's moving forward. That's what I'm interested in working on. I'm sick and tired of talking about leaf blowers at every single event that I go to.
Thank you. All right, uh, Councilmember Cook and?
And I just wanted to comment that that's why we're here tonight. We're here to, um, take care of a, an issue that has been going on for five years. So I'm sorry that it's taken up some of your precious time, but I think that that's why we were elected.
Okay, um, there's no comment from the audience that's, involves clapping. If you agree with the point, please raise your hands. All right, um, Madeline, do you have?
I'm in shock. What would you like?
What would you like?
I just, I just wanted to say you feel that you have stated what you wish to state or?
Yes, and I think I've already discussed this with our city manager with respect to blowing debris into the streets and into a neighbor's yard. And I think those are the, and the other thing, of course, and I know, Dave, you're going to go through this step by step. I'm still looking at 8:30 to start, but that's where I am right now.
All right, so I feel it's time for me to weigh in. This is a quality of life issue. I was appointed in one term. I was elected in another. I have had this discussion through my now totaling over eight years of service here in Sonoma. I handled this on a commission. It is time to put this to bed. It is time to pick a path and follow it. This is a quality of life issue. This is a matter of public health and safety. This comes up time after time. A compromise? I cannot believe that if we have people who actually partner together for a common good, and this happens in many professions, in many issues that we come forward here on council, that we would ever not respect that process. It is about mediating. It is about building consensus. For me, in this particular issue, I feel whether you are a person who is operating a leaf blower, whether you are a person who is subscribing to those services, whether you are an employer who's employing someone who uses a leaf blower. We have tried best practices. We have tried training. We have tried all of the issues that have come forward. We have been to the table for years on this particular issue. I myself am supporting what I consider to be the highest and best for the residents of our community. I have not just these people in this room that have talked to me about this issue. I have years of people talking to me about this issue. It's known my position. Why would I not have people talking to me about this particular issue? And I have people who are against my position on this particular issue. The fact is, is that we are here for civil discourse. We are not here for name-flinging, any petty issues that someone wants to do here. It might seem petty to me, but it is important to someone else. And who are we to deny that right of a citizen in Sonoma? I want to say that this needs to go further. I am in support of getting a straw poll vote, as we have done before, so staff can bring forward an ordinance. I would like to pursue that process. I have been on the negative side of a straw poll vote, where I did not want to support something, yet I still weighed in. I would ask for participation of council members to their fullest level tonight so that we can come together and support something that will go ahead and move this issue forward because it has been stuck, stalled, tabled, and now it's time for action, once and for all. This is a path that we need to follow. So, at that point, I'd like to go ahead and have the city manager just go ahead and state the first item, which we will talk about type of equipment. And we will, we will give our answers as to what we prefer. And these are all the bullet items plus whatever else you might wish to bring forward. All right.
Okay, the first bullet point is type of equipment allowed. So, this, as written, would completely eliminate the use of all gas-powered leaf blower equipment within the city limits of Sonoma. All areas of the city would be open for the use of electric or battery-operated equipment, and this would be for all users, including the city.
All right, so the straw poll vote would be the use of electric or battery-operated equipment, yes or no?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, do you agree that this ordinance eliminates the use of all gas-powered leaf blowers and allows only the use of electric or battery-operated?
Okay, and I'd like to go ahead and start at this end of council, and we'll just keep rotating.
No, I'm not interested in banning gas-powered leaf blowers. I'm more inclined to work towards the current policies we have in place, construction hours and?
We're just going through the first item.
But our current ordinance. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I'm in favor of banning gas blowers.
I am in favor of banning gas blowers.
And yes, I'm, I would vote yes on banning gas leaf blowers but keeping electric battery.
No.
Okay, you have our straw poll vote on that. The second item?
The second item is hours of operation. And currently, as written, it includes hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., except on city holidays. And so, we're looking for direction on hours of operation. As written, it is 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. So, a straw poll on, straw vote on those hours or a proposal for alternate hours.
Okay, and Madeline, I will start with you.
I agree, well, the hours, I would like it to start at 8:30 rather than at 8:00 a.m.
Okay, and do you have Monday through Saturday is sufficient for you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and on city holidays? Okay?
Yes.
All right. I would prefer the hours of 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and to have it, city holidays, no operation.
I also like the Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and not on any city holidays.
Rachel?
What was the existing ordinance?
Well, the?
The blow guidelines.
Yeah, I support keeping 9:00 to 4:00.
Okay.
Okay, and Mr. Edwards?
I support keeping our current ordinance.
Okay, now we go on to noise level. I will not be the first, so I will go ahead and let David start.
So, just for clarification, we have 9:00 to 4:00 on the hours.
Yes, we have majority.
All right.
Yeah.
On noise level, the operation of leaf blowers shall comply with the noise ordinance. I'm in agreeance with that.
Yes.
Noise ordinance is fine.
Yes.
And yes, for noise level. Enforcement?
And the enforcement, as stated, the property owner or tenant and the landscaper will be subject to the penalty provisions. So, both would be, the operator and the property owner or tenant is subject to the penalty provisions of the ordinance. The fine that is imposed for the violation will depend on whether the ordinance is prosecuted as an infraction, misdemeanor, or administratively. And again, this will be under the jurisdiction and penalty depending on the violation through the city prosecutor's office or the city attorney's office.
All right, and council member Hundley is asking for clarification. Your question?
So, going back to the difference between infraction, misdemeanor, and administratively, what are parking tickets? How's that, how are they handled?
The penal code controls that, and the police officers issue those, not non-sworn employees of the city.
So, can you explain to me again the difference between what would be an infraction or administratively? Assuming that both, that either way, that the code enforcement officer is going to be the person that handles it?
The city has adopted administrative penalty process, and we have not yet done this, but the council will be provided a resolution setting forth the fines that can be imposed through that administrative process. So, I can't tell you precisely what the fines are, but it's a fining process, and they will likely be different, I think, than those that are imposable under the infraction process and the misdemeanor process. The infraction process and the misdemeanor process are utilized through the courts. You only can obtain a judgment imposing an infraction penalty by going to the courts and prosecuting the case as an infraction. In many jurisdictions, the courts treat infraction prosecutions like a traffic ticket. So, you were assigned a date before the traffic commissioner to handle the infraction. A misdemeanor is something different. If you charge a criminal with a misdemeanor, the criminal is entitled to a jury trial and public defender. So, it's often the case that cities will not prosecute code violations under that procedure because it ratchets up the expense and the cost of both the state as well as the city.
And I believe on this item, I went first before. You went first, okay. All right, do you have who we are now at at this point? Okay, I think it's Rachel. Is that correct? Okay, Rachel, on enforcement?
Property owner, tenant, and landscaper and administratively. Is that everything?
All right, council member Edwards?
Those are her three.
I'm interested only in sticking with our current ordinance. Based on what the city attorney just spoke about, I think everyone's going to ask for a jury trial, and it's going to put us out of business, so I'm not going to support.
Can I support that?
I myself feel that I am looking for enforcement for property owner, tenant, and I like the idea of an infraction because I think it's, I think fines are valuable as far as that's concerned. I am not in favor of misdemeanor, and I feel administratively, especially due to the mediation processes that I think we have in place for the city, that this would probably be a better alternative.
And I would vote yes on the enforcement on the page.
I'd like to make a comment about the enforcement. These are options. These are options that actually the city has before it for any and all violations of the code right now. Whether you're building without a building permit, or you've let garbage accumulate in the front of your home, the city has these three ways of going. There's actually a fourth approach. The fourth approach is seeking orders from the court, commanding the property owner to comply with the city's codes. That option would be available here, too. So, if we have a repeated offender who has now sustained 75 infraction penalties and continues to blow leaves with a gas blower, at that point, then maybe the city prosecutor or the city attorney's office says, gosh, this is not working because this happens to be Bill Gates, and he can pay fines until the sun don't shine ever again. So, at that point, the city prosecutor or the city attorney meets with the city manager and says, we are not having any effect here. So, let us file a lawsuit getting an injunction from the court preventing Bill Gates and his leaf blower, blowing agents from ever blowing a leaf again on his property. So, these avenues of enforcement are optional. They are discretionary with the city prosecutor or office consulting with the city manager, and they're there to respond to differing types of conduct by the public. So, you're not having to select one tonight. You just need to know that they're all available. They already exist, and we're just sort of reinforcing that fact by including them in this ordinance.
If I could just ask a question, if someone is convicted of a misdemeanor, does that not stay on their file, you know, fingerprints, anything like that for lifetime or?
I believe it does. Having never been convicted of a misdemeanor, I'm not quite sure, but I think?
Well, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. But I'm definitely?
Is that a confession?
I believe so. It's a criminal record that I think that can be expunged under certain circumstances, but I don't know them. I'm not a criminal attorney.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, are we down to the enforcement date now?
So, I'm looking for an enforcement date, and again, this was the, you know, assuming that your first reading would be, again, at your next council meeting, so this was just, the July 4th was a count-forward date. So, you know, would be comfortable with, you know, any date of your choosing. Again, this was a transition date to give, you know, plenty of notice to the public so that they could make the transition. So, we are open to July 1st, August 1st, whatever, whatever date you choose.
All right, and I believe we're starting with Madeline again? Okay.
Well, it seems that July 4th is sort of a momentous date, and I don't know if I want to use that date.
Again, it was just a, it was a coincidence that it was a count-forward date.
Right, and I think I was reminded that council member Edwards probably should have started that off. So, council member Edwards, my apologies. Let's start with you.
You often ignore me down here, Holly.
I'll try to do better.
The, I don't know how to actually answer this one because I don't believe that, I disagree with what we're doing here, so I'm going to pass.
Okay.
Does that pass to me then?
You, you said your date, didn't you not?
Yes, that I would prefer not be a momentous July 4th date, just a regular date.
Okay, I'm going to let David and Rachel answer, and then I'll be last.
Well, this is one that I went kind of back and forth. It is an enforcement date, meaning that that's the time that hopefully we will be enforcing it because anything that we pass, I believe, should be enforced. I do not like the July 4th date. I would like to talk to my colleagues on the council and see if we want to do a July 1 or a June 1. But I would probably think with timing, it would probably be July 1 is where I, but I would like to see what my colleagues have to say.
I might suggest, you know, not roll back to June 1. I mean, that gives even less time because you really want to give the, you want to give the public, give the city the opportunity to really give public notice.
Yeah, July 1.
And so, you know, I would say, don't go less than July 1.
Yeah, July 1 would be the start of the fiscal year, so I think that makes sense.
And Rachel?
And I don't have an opinion on this.
All right, and I would go for July 1 or August 1, depending upon timing of our second reading. I like the 90 days' notice. So, and I want to make sure that our enforcement officer is up to it. So, I am okay with July 1 if it's timely and everything is in place, and if we need to do another 30 days, I would go for August 1. So, all right, do you have your answers?
Well, do we want July 1 or August 1?
All right, I will go for the discussion tonight, July 1.
Madeline? July 1? All right.
All right. Now, I believe at this point, is there any other items?
I'm looking for any other items.
Yes, council member Hundley?
I agree that if, since this ordinance, if it is amended, that we should include in the ordinance that people cannot blow in the street and have it not be just a guideline.
in the ordinance that people cannot blow in the street and have it not be just a guideline, but actually enforceable.
I agree 100% with that.
Madeline?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay, David?
And I'm fine with that.
And I will go with the rest of the council. All right, is there any other items that we need to be discussing at this time for formulation of this ordinance? Okay, staff, do you have what you need?
I do, thank you.
Okay. So I would like to take a five-minute recess. So we'll go on to item 7B. And this is the presentation of the 2015-2016 mid-year budget discussion, consideration, and possible action on amendments to the fiscal year 2016 operating budget. Deanna, I believe, as our finance director, you're going to be taking over the item.
Thank you, Mayor Gallion, councilmembers. I am pleased to present the mid-year budget for the City of Sonoma. It's an important part of our fiscal management goal and responsibility to keep track of our expenses and make adjustments as we need to, and our revenues. So as we start, as we get to the middle of the fiscal year, we are, our revenues are ahead of budget, are ahead of expenses, excuse me, and at about 50% of budget. We will get into some more detail about that as there are some items to be mindful of. The main item to be thinking about as we look at our revenue and expense picture is this is a point in time. So we're looking at basically December 31st. So some revenues come in late, some come in early, some expenses come in late, some bills come in after the fact, and some are paid in advance. And we'll talk about some of those anomalies as we get into the details. So for the fiscal year 2015-16, revenue was budgeted at $16,826,000. Of that amount, $12,526,000 is discretionary, meaning council can use it for any general purpose. The other revenues, for example, might be grant revenues or transfers for specific purposes. Fees are an example of a non-discretionary, it's meant to reimburse the cost of a service. So one of the things that I did this year was break out those revenues for you to look at, as that is where, again, the most discretion lies in terms of adjustments and changes. So the top discretionary revenue sources for the city are TOT, transient occupancy tax, sales tax, Measure J, transactions and use tax, property tax, and the vehicle license fee swap. And this is where the cautionary note comes in. These sources are continuing to grow this year. They were budgeted to have a bit of increase, but not at the same pace as in previous years. So in previous years, we were seeing, for example, double-digit increases. And in one case, which we'll talk about soon, we are seeing a decline in revenue from budget. So at this time, we anticipate that other revenue sources that are growing will compensate for any shrinking revenue sources, but we'll monitor it closely and bring back to any need for adjustment or change. And you've got a graph in your packet with those top five sources there. And if you look at that, the blue line, which is TOT, you'll see that it's been really steep, and then all of a sudden, it's a little bit straight from one year to the next. Same for Measure J, and that's the area where we're seeing potential decline. So again, the items that are excluded from discretionary revenue are fees and rents. You know, rents, for example, for the plaza, fees for building permits, and those types of activities. Transfers, the RPTTF successor agency admin, which is assigned specifically for those administrative costs related to the successor agency, and grants. Typically, they're associated to capital projects. I did include an appendix, which we, I won't go over into, I'll look at a little bit with you later, but in terms of a five-year picture, so that you, as a council, can see where we've been and where we're going. So we've really had, we've covered very well from the economic downturn, from loss of redevelopment, and reduction in our investment portfolio earnings. We're actually seeing those start to grow, but not, again, not nearly at the pace that they were. And the important things here are the sound fiscal policies made by all of you. And that's going to have to continue as our revenue sources start to flatten. So another example was the Tourism Improvement District. That's been helpful to bring more tourist activity, which brings TOT and also additional sales tax and Measure J. We'll be talking with you soon as well about Measure J, as that is expiring at the end of fiscal 2017. And so we'll be talking about that in the future. So to go over some of the specific revenue sources, again, we talked about TOT. And after experiencing some really significant increases over the last couple of years, it's relatively flat, perhaps a slight increase. Again, this is a projection from a point in time and typically done on a straight-line basis. So our busier months tend to have already passed. So there is, with a straight-line forecast, that may be even a little bit ambitious to assume that we'll hit the target, but we are watching it closely. Property tax is above budget, or above 50% of budget, it's at 64%. That being said, the, there are occurrences where people pay their full property tax at the December timeframe, so it's hard to tell how much of that is people paying early versus, you know, less, people who are delinquent versus a true increase in property values. And we don't really know the end of that until we get a payment in July of the following year that's brought back in. Sales tax is declining slightly from our forecast, but should, but it's mostly a timing issue. So I believe many of you have heard Michael Coleman speak about the triple flip, which is stopping this year. And what that is, is that part of our sales tax comes in as part of our property tax payment. And that is ending this year, so we'll start getting our sales tax monthly in full versus having it come in monthly with 20.25% coming in in property tax. But with that, there's a reconciliation that was expected in December that's actually happening in May with a follow-up reconciliation in July. So we expect that sales tax to catch up to projections. Measure J, we took a really deep look at because that was actually pretty far below projections, about $100,000. And there are two big drivers of that. One is that gas prices are declining, which is great for all of us as consumers and even for us as an agency, but it does result in lower tax dollars coming to us. And I recently looked at our top 25 sales taxpayers, and several of those are gas stations, service stations. And another reason is part of our projection included some one-time payments, in particular DMV allocation. So when someone purchases a private part of a used vehicle, sales tax from that used vehicle is allocated back to us through a pool. And we had, in 2014, we had some higher-than-normal payments that were forecasted and really needed to be backed out of the forecast. So we're hoping that our other revenue measures are able to adjust, our other revenue sources are able to compensate for that issue. Vehicle license fees are above budget, above 50% of budget, so we expect them to meet projections. Real estate transfer taxes also looking to meet projections. And franchise taxes look a little bit low, but we're aware of some that come in much later, for example, from PG&E. So it's very difficult to forecast, but we would expect it to at least meet its budget. With expenses, our department managers continue to manage them very well and stay very much on top of their expenses and their programs and projects. And so I've given you a little bit of a table with where the various departments are at. And I wanted to talk to you about some of the anomalies. So for example, the police department is at 36% of budget midway through the year. However, because some of their billing is based on actual costs, the county is gathering up those costs, and they're usually about two months behind schedule in terms of billing. The fire department, on the other hand, is right at 50%, and that's because we have a fixed contract with them, and we also manage their cash. All of their cash is actually in our accounts. So we just do internal transfers, and we do those every single month. So for them to be at 50% is just a measure of where the, of where our transfers are, that our transfers are complete. Another example is in public works and parks, and there's two reasons here. They did have some staff vacancies early in the year. And they also are responsible for a number of utility costs that tend to come in late. Billing for utilities comes in after our time has passed. So with that, again, the general fund picture is looking good. It's still a cautionary note because, again, we're having some flat revenues. And I think we'll have to take a close look at budget time and really recognize that there could be some trade-offs. If revenue is flat and there's some expenses that are not, we'll really have to take a close look. We've also looked at our other major funds. The primary ones are mentioned here. Gas tax fund is also at budget. The gas tax revenues are not necessarily impacted by the gas prices because they're more of an excise tax, they're more fixed. But they could come back to us in a couple of years. It's more of an estimation correction, estimation correction. Expenses are at 62% of budget, meaning they're over budget. However, most of this is related to the LED lighting project, which is nearly complete. So a large capital project tends to expend, will receive some revenue from PG&E as a no-interest loan, and that fund should be well within budget by the end of the year. Cemetery fund is also performing well on a current-year basis. So revenues are exceeding budget. I wish that was really something positive to say, but I don't feel like it. But again, we're not suggesting changes to that budget because there are, some of those are expenses recovery, so somebody will, for example, prepay for a marker, and we have an actual expense that goes back to that. We will be bringing back a proposal for a long-term solution as that fund still has a long-term ongoing deficit from prior years. So we'll probably be bringing that for the next few months. Water fund is, revenues are at 57% of budget and expenses are at 30%. Again, we have a timing issue, especially related to the county billing for the water contract. We are monitoring it very closely because we, with the conservation measures, the new tier programming, we want to be sure that those conservation measures aren't resulting us having insufficient revenue to meet operations. As of our last review, we are doing fine, but we'll monitor it again. We also have some upcoming changes to our costs from the water agency, from the county water agency, and we'll be revisiting that and letting you know if we need to make adjustments to our rates based on their changes. So we are near completion of our fiscal 2014-2015 audit, so we don't have those fund balance numbers yet. But do recall that as part of the 2015-16 budget, there was about $682,000 rolled forward, meaning of the fund balance from 1415, we anticipated, because of delays in capital projects and programs, using some of that fund balance into this year. So as we complete the annual audit, we'll be coming back to you with that audit, with the fund balance, and probably looking at our reserve fund policy at that time. So again, I want to remind you all that we've maintained a stable financial position due to prudent decisions on your part, really looking at our finances on a regular basis. And we're going to be visiting this regularly as we get into your goal-setting and budget. We do have a significant contract coming off of the ROPS, meaning it was paid through our redevelopment funding, and it won't be anymore. So if that's a program the council would want to continue, it would come from discretionary dollars. So we want to be really aware of some of these trade-offs that might be happening as we get into the next fiscal year. And this is the time to really start to think about where we are. So we are recommending some budget amendments, and I'll walk through some of those with you and give you some more detail. And these amendments do have sufficient funds from unanticipated revenue, so we're not asking for any transfers from reserves. So you do have a list of proposed amendments in your packet, Exhibit A. The two areas of unanticipated revenue, the first is RPTTF. So after the redevelopment debts are paid, the redevelopment agency debts are paid through the ROPS process, we, the county then recognizes what's left over, submits it to all taxing agencies. And for this year, we received $101,000. It's always going to be a bit of an unknown until we get further along in the process, so that is unbudgeted unanticipated revenue. And that's where we recommend that we budget these unanticipated expenses. The next area is specific to EMS, and there are some specific EMS items that we're looking to add expenses for. And because of some revenue, new revenue that we retain primarily through the Intergovernmental Transfers Program and the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program, these programs provided us additional revenue against other accounts, amounts that otherwise have been written off as uncollectible. So, but those revenues have to go back into the EMS program. So where many things are actually paid and not shared, are shared expense between the fire district and the city, in this case, we're recommending that the city cover 100% of these EMS costs. And EMS revenue does come directly to the general fund and offsets the cost of the fire contract. So going through the list, we have some change in employee benefits in council budget. In the finance department budget, we've had some increased costs of business license notices. We've increased the number of notices that we're sending out. We're working with Bob Smith to really try to clean up our database. And we are seeing that, I checked this morning, we are seeing that come in on the revenue side, so hopefully that ends up offsetting itself on the revenue side. So we, business licenses are due at the end of the year, December 31st, and we are about, I think we're about 90% of budget, but we'll always get a few more in as new businesses come in, a contractor comes in to do one project, that type of thing. A couple council meetings ago, you approved your code enforcement agreement that we've talked about, so we are allocating budget to that contract. The police department had a couple of small items. They replaced some very old office chairs. And they also have to replace their traffic vehicle. And they're able to do that at a very low cost by purchasing another used vehicle out of the county's fleet. So it's a pretty small item. They also had previously approved a replacement vehicle in the budget, but there's an additional, the cost is higher than originally anticipated, so we're seeking another $2,000 to cover the cost of that vehicle. The fire department items are those we talked about before. They have, one of the things that they've been doing, and the city will start looking at it next, but they are taking credit cards, and that has some fees, so they need to increase their budget for those fees to take credit cards. They've also had some requirements regarding patient data and technology, so they have software and hardware requirements that they've needed to purchase to meet these legislative requirements. And finally, they have, they are asking to purchase an Autopulse mechanical CPR device. And this has been shown, and they've got ad hoc cases where it's shown to improve patient outcomes and cardiac arrests, including a patient who basically walked out of the hospital. So it's been, it's great for the employees and it's great for our constituents. Public Works has an item for a trash capture study, so there's a new requirement in the state water quality control plan. And that will be managed by the county with the city contributing a share of it, and so they've estimated our share at $3,000. Since we've taken on the Montini Preserve, we've got some costs related to maintaining that that are not covered by the county, and so we're asking for some budget there. And that'll be taken care of in Public Works as well. There were some unanticipated repairs at Carnegie Library, primarily the windows, weatherproofing, and some rot. So, and we also, the city also purchased a new Christmas tree in coordination with the plaza lighting, and so we're requesting budget augmentation for that. The last item is the LED lighting project. And what I want to be clear about here is the project is not over budget, but at the time we established budget, we used the bottom-line number of the project. But as the project has gone on, inventories have changed, we've learned more about our lighting systems and what we've needed. So this number of $42,000 is below the council-adopted project budget, but it was not set forth in our final budget, adopted budget for the city. So we're just making the financial transactions. So we're just making the financial transactions for that project to be completed within the With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I do have a question.
All right, we'll go ahead, council questions, and Mayor Protem Agamonte?
I, for line item, Deanna, I think you mentioned replace, no, no, re, um, oh, God, Police Department, page twenty-five, machinery and equipment, two thousand dollars, additional cost of replacement vehicle, is that the little one where they use to do the little, to mark cars?
Yes.
Is that the one? Oh, because I missed seeing it. I didn't, I didn't know where it was. So now I know, and I think it broke down, is that right?
I believe it was in an accident at some point. I don't know if it was repaired after that, but they are, it's, it's based on a ten-year plan for vehicle replacements, so it's, it's time to be.
It's time, all right.
So I don't know if it was leaning or just in, in its schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, more or less, just have a comment. On page twenty-one, the general fund expenditures, it's kind of hard to, to read. Every, every year when we do the budget, is there a way that we could actually do an actual for the mid-year of the previous year? Because it seems like there's some trends, like you're talking about the police department, the billing, different things. Is there a way that we could do a percentage of, just seeing what it was the year prior? And it might make it a little bit easier, because one of the questions I had was on the TOT. I didn't know if there's, if there's a trend there. If you, if you take the fiscal year from July to June 30th, I would assume that the TOT is probably equal for those because you have some slow months in both of those. And that's why I think for me it would be a little bit easier, just to see, you know, where exactly we are at, because mid-year budget seems to be something that would be pretty important, you know, for me to, to understand.
So to compare mid-year to mid-year?
Mid-year to mid-year from the prior year. I think that way we could kind of see what trends, because they're just numbers to most people, and I've always said, if you can't read a budget within two minutes, then you better make it so you can.
And I would just request that, you know, it'd still be reported as percentages, because, again, when you're looking at it on a percentage basis, it could be one year you have a different percentage received, okay, versus another year. Like in, in my question, like when I look at sales tax and we see that it's dipping, well, you know, at, at some point, maybe one year we might drop off in October versus another year we might be very thriving in October. We don't, we don't have that information, it's not quite that distinct from where we get it, but it sounds to me like our system now, where we'll be receiving it, it'll be a lot easier to track that as well. So that might be an anomaly for next year if we did have a presentation that way.
And the sales tax in particular is really, that's a terrible, um, line.
Right.
So in the future, it should be more measured.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right, let's go out to the public for public comment. Anyone wishing to give public comment on this item? Seeing no one galvanize to the podium, we'll go ahead and close it and bring it back to council for motion for resolution of adoption, or any other actions you should propose. And looking to Councilmember Hundley?
I'll make the motion to adopt the amendments to the fiscal year 2016 operating budget.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Mayor Gallion?
Aye. So that passes five-zero, resolution of the City Council of the City of Sonoma amending the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. And we'll move on to, thank you very much, Deanna, well done. We'll go ahead and move to Item 7C, which is the discussion, consideration, and possible action to establish a process for determining community focus per fiscal year 2015-2016 council goals. And I believe Carol Chivinato, our city manager, is up for this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallion, members of the city council. Under your council goals, you have under city character, there's one key element, and it states to make a commitment to the community for a special focus or dedication. And it's kind of described as the year of the children or the year of the neighborhoods just by way of examples. And in order to successfully accomplish this key element, staff is bringing this forward and suggesting that council determine a more detailed discussion on what that process might look like to undertake, to undertake how to determine what that dedication might be. And so I put in your staff report two potential options that you might consider to accomplish this key element. And the first one is that council could determine the designation during your council goal-setting discussion. This did come up again during your 15-16 goal-setting session. And one way you might accomplish this is outreach could be solicited from the public as a part of your future or your next council goal-setting priority for the upcoming year. This would become then an input tool for budget priorities or a focus area for the community fund grant applications. As you recall, you just approved the format for the community fund grant applications, so in the future, if you determine that your focus might be on a specific topic, then that would be potentially one of your priority areas for the next year's community fund. Or a second option may be that upon the appointment of the mayor, the mayor could make a proposal as to their designation for council ratification, and that would be in the beginning of the calendar year in January, and then this would become the theme for which they wish to represent their year in office. So those are just two thoughts that came to mind as I was working on council goals and, and the goals progress reports. So just a couple thoughts that I had. This key element was recommended by Mayor Protem Agamonte, so I'm sure she would like to weigh in on this topic as well, but it is just an, it is an item I wanted to bring forward because, again, it, it's part of your council goals for your current year.
Okay. So we have this, this forward. I would entertain questions or any discussion, and then we could go to public comment, all right? Councilmember Hundley?
I have a question for Councilmember Agamonte, because I think that you have experienced something similar to this, so how did that work? And what's, what are your thoughts on all this?
Thank you for asking. The city that I come from, we, that I came from, actually felt this was very important to have a year designated to some, to something, and I think one year they, we actually did that and designated the year to children, and how that, how that worked was, any development that was done, that was completed or proposed in their city, we would look to see, is it, if it's a large development, is there a playground for children? Are there safety measures within the development for children with respect to recreation, possibly focusing on one age group? And there are, there are different things actually that we could do here, and I think, you know, I'm not really imaginative, but I know that recently we've been talking about the history of Sonoma. I don't know what that, what that would entail, but I hope that helped you. Did it help you?
So how was the subject matter selected for each year?
I believe that it was the mayor that chose it. And I'm sure, you know, obviously ratified by the city council, and I think that the mayor chose that, and, you know, it seemed to be accepted. And I think it was, it also had an awful lot to do with an issue or issues that kept coming forward, and that's how it came to the mayor's attention, and, and I believe that was what it was like. I don't know if they do it anymore, but they did it then.
Okay. Anyone else having questions going forward? All right. Let's go ahead and open public comment on this. Anyone wishing to speak?
Fred Alabak, 1-95508 Street East, and I'd just like to make a general comment about city council goals, is I've, I've been to the council goal-setting session for the last couple of years, and I had no idea that, that that was something that the city manager felt like was sort of her blueprint for what she would do that year. I thought it was, until I met with you in your office one day and you said, that's, that's my job description. So I had no idea, because I thought that it was just sort of a general statement of, of, you know, what you had thought and what you might do. So, you know, it just goes to show that, you know, as you're keeping your eye on stuff, you still might not get what's going on even though it's right in front of you. So I think that this, and I remember the last goal-setting meeting when Gary said, I don't think we need any more goals because we already have enough stuff going on. So then Gary didn't get stuff that he might want to have had on there, because maybe he didn't know that this was the blueprint for what would be happening for the whole year. So, so I, that's my understanding, I could be wrong, but I think in this instance, this is specifying the general premises of the council goals. So, you know, perhaps the next goal session, you could have like general goals and then specific ways to get at them, so that there would be some kind of benchmarks. There are just some thoughts that I had about council goals, so I saw that on the, the agenda, so I wanted to say something about it, and I would like to attend the next council goal session and, you know, just watch, you know, and clarify for myself, you know, is, is it really the blueprint for, for what's happening the next year, or is it a general thing, or how does it get specific? So just a few comments I had on that.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for further discussion. Yes, Councilmember Cook?
Well, I just wanted to mention that our council goal session is going to be May 23rd, 2016, at one o'clock in the EOC room, so you might want to put that on your calendar.
Thank you. Councilmember Hundley, are you willing to start off discussion?
Sure. Well, I think that this is a great idea, and because during the goal-setting meeting, and then also when we had our mid-year view, it seems like, you know, we, the five of us, we like, sort of get excited about some things together, so this would, it would be an interesting way to, especially with the community service fund, and then even like what you mentioned about the playgrounds and stuff like that, even like to sort of expand thinking for a year about a certain thing. I think that's really interesting. As far as how it's picked, because of the discussions that we've had during our goal-setting meetings, and I've always found them really inspiring, I think that as a part of the, that meeting, perhaps towards the end where we see where we're, where we all overlap, we could have a, a discussion about what that could be. So I think that as far as these two, which I think are both great ideas, but I think I'm leaning towards number one.
Okay. Anyone else wish to express their opinions? All right. This is an item where we're looking for council discretion, and you're going to get input from us, is that correct? Okay. So any, if there's no one else wishing to speak? Okay, there we go. Councilmember Cook?
I think it's a great concept, being a past mayor. I, I think it does sound great. I would, I would more or less go for number two with the ratification of the council, kind of given the flexibility of the mayor to kind of say what they want. I know that I had a mayor's message, it was synergy, you know, I was talking to the city major about it today. I didn't know that a lot of people were listening, but, you know, in, in the end, I think it was something that kind of resonated, so I could see that it's a, it's a great thing. During, during council goal sessions, I just think that it's the wrong timing, depending on who the mayor's going to be the, the next year. So it would be something that probably if the mayor brings up and, and ratification and discussion is how I would lean.
Councilmember Edwards?
So I'm gonna go with number one. You know, my important things in, in my world are, are food and housing, and I believe that should be the full council goal. I, I think it's, it's best if we're all five working in the same direction, and I, I think number one is the way to go.
Mayor Protem Agamonte, you're a brainchild.
Well, I'm just so gratified people are interested in this. With respect to the year of children, when I made that comment, I actually also, you know, we would recognize organizations that worked and did things for children. It was a way of saying, this is what our community is, is made up of. I, there are so many things that I work for, work on, and I know that something that has come to our attention, of course, is the issue of housing. But, you know, I, as I said, my mantra is recreation, so I'm looking at the year of the children.
And do you have a preference as to, you would like to do one or two, or do you propose another alternate?
I just, I, I think, one.
Here we go.
One.
Okay, so you have it, that it would be there. So I'd like to just go through a scenario of what one would look like, all right? So this year, this time. So, so when we go through that, the council could determine the designation during goal-setting session. So we would have this in, I'm sorry.
May?
May.
Is it May?
It's May, right. Okay, that's the goal-setting session. Okay. I'll look at my agenda, I will be prepared. All right. That would then become an input tool for budget priorities or focus for the community fund grant applications, because we would not be issuing those. We would have a call for proposal for our grants, and when would we be doing that? When will we be making that decision?
Well, the, the call for grants is, you've already set your priorities.
Okay.
For this year.
For this year.
Yeah, so this is going to be kind of an.
Right, like next year?
Yes.
We're doing it in May, and then what do we do for next year?
Then for the following year, then when you'd have your goal-setting session, which is normally earlier, it's bumped a little later this year, but normally you have your goal-setting sessions in, around March, which is about the time you're ready to issue your community fund applications. And so if, as Councilmember Edwards says, you know, if your community focus was food, for, you know, or food or housing, then perhaps one of your core focus areas would be around food or Food Alliance or something like that, well, then that might be one of your focus areas for your community fund grant. And so then you would hope that some of the grant applications would be focused around providing, you know, funding areas for how food might be the focus for, you know, some of the providers that would be applying for your grants. That would be a, a concept of, you know, this focus area. Does that, does that kind of describe, perhaps?
Well, that describes a little bit more in detail what you're trying to input here.
If, yeah, if you were going to choose, you know, if you were going to choose that.
So I, I think my only question would be that if you were going to say in the, in the advent of Madeline where you were going to make it the year of the child, you would be declaring that for an input tool for the community grant funds, but would you be making that as a council goal for other goals that they would have during the year?
Yes, and if you were going, you know, then it wouldn't relate necessarily, if you were going to do year of the children, that wouldn't necessarily relate to your community fund, per se, in this year, but, you know, you might focus on something to do with neighbor, with neighborhoods, with, with parks, you know, where you're looking at, you know, play structures or some, or some kind of, you know, organized event or something, you know, something of, of that nature, you know? And again, I'm just kind of brainstorming very quickly here, but, you know, looking, you know, you know, looking at something like that, or, you know, recognizing agencies that provide, you know, children's activities, or, you know, something, something of that, you know, something of that nature, really supporting something in activity in the plaza, perhaps, that is really. perhaps, that is really, you know, um, centric to, to children, things, you know, things like that.
Okay, and, I, well, I do believe Madeline had something too, and then I will go to Councilmember Hunley.
Putting on my nonprofit hat, um, I know when you go for funding, it's usually you go because you know what the organ is, what the foundation believes in. Quarter horses, food programs, so if we change that every year, it may not, it may mix that up, you know? So I guess it makes possibly we lose a focus, and I don't think I did that. We did that where I came from. It was different. It had to do with the government and how we handled, uh, how we dealt with children, what we, you know, what services. We would ensure that our playgrounds were safe. Um, we would possibly have cleanups for playgrounds. You know, things like that. Award, you know, recognize people who, as you said, have children's programs, but I, for the, I guess for the, um, grant process, I don't know, I don't know, I wouldn't want to confuse that, but that's just how I feel, and others can weigh in.
Yeah, and it may, it may not, it may or may not be a tie-in to the grant program, is, that's just one thought, as, as we kind of brainstorm down this path.
All right, and Councilmember Hunley?
I could see it as perhaps one of the grants, or part of the grants, but there could be like, kind of like, the highlight one.
Oh.
That relates, but then the rest of it's sort of the same process each time, and, I mean, really, the possibilities are endless. I mean, e- each of the commissions, like I'm thinking of, you know, cultural and fine arts, pretty much anything that could get inspiration for that, planning commission, I don't know about design review, but I think that there's a lot of ways that it could be incorporated, public recognition of organizations.
Like the Rose Parade. It has a, you know, that grant has a name, I don't know.
Okay, and council, oh, I'm, you finished?
Oh, and the last thing I was going to say, um, going back between one and two, um, I just think that for, I think that getting everyone on the same page is meaningful, and I also think it might be more meaningful to the public to feel confident that, you know, the five of us agree on something, and sort of moving forward, and I think that it's something that everyone could feel really good about.
Okay, and Councilmember Cook?
And I, I mean, I agree with what Councilmember Agamonte is saying. Um, I, I wouldn't want to see it connected to the community fund, because I, I think that the community fund is something totally different. Um, so this being connected to county, uh, council goals, I, I disagree strongly about, because when you're a council member, and we have three new on the council, if there's an election in November, uh, there possibly would be inheriting something that, I mean, council goals are great, but they do stay behind a little bit, because I remember there's, there's that six-month period, there could be a little bit, uh, changing. So I like the fact of, um, of number two, but what I wanted to mention, um, because I, I don't want my colleagues to think that it gives the mayor power. What the mayor could do is the mayor could pick three things that he or she believes, like wants to be Year of the Child, wants to be, um, you know, parks and recreation, uh, any of these issues, and there was three, and that way through the ratification process, um, you know, all the council members, uh, would be able to weigh in, and there'd be a strong discussion. But that January 1st, uh, if, if we're going to move forward, I would say, I would do it in January, when you have the, the new mayor, the new council every two years, um, there could be a, a major change up here on the council. And that just kind of shows public, um, you know, what, what this council, you know, believes in, and, you know, and possibly the mayor at the time, uh, if there's something very strong that they feel about, um, they can kind of add in, and maybe, uh, have the, have the three, would be, uh, would be my suggestion.
Right, and, and I'll go ahead and just, um, weigh in a little bit here. Um, I think that, you know, it's an excellent point that Councilmember Cook brought up, is the fact that, you know, given an election period, we'd have a certification time, we'd have people being sworn in and whatever, that to me would be the time to maybe solicit some ideas and come up with a consensus of, you know, what those ideas would be, and then the mayor would be given either top three, or top four, or five, whatever it is, and then go ahead and make that selection. Um, it's always with the ratification of the council, just, just because one person, you know, is saying, "This is what I hold dear," it's not like, "That's my recommendation, that's what I'm going to put forward." If you don't have the synergy, or the consensus of other council members, it really falls flat for how that's going to go forward in, uh, the action of council for that year. So maybe it could be something that would be implemented in the first, um, meeting of, of December, um, that you would go ahead and it would be request for, um, designation. I would like, I like the idea about the public actually putting that information forward. I think that's a very democratic process, and, um, there might be things that we haven't considered that would be appropriate, and I would just ask if they were going to say the Year of what, and what does that look like to them, you know, as an explanation? So we have a little bit further than just, "It's the Year of the Child, and what are you going to do with it?" Okay? Um, I don't know, so anybody else want to weigh in on that? Yes, Councilmember Hunley?
So what was the timing of the community grant applications theoretically?
Uh, release the information mid to late March, and then they are due in 45 days.
And goal-setting is usually?
Goal-setting is usually late March.
Yeah, I just like the two together. I think that this, this, this conversation during goal-setting is, is just so helpful and related to this, and having, you know, everything ultimately mixed or, or connected, you know, the goals are connected to our values, that are connected to whatever this is, that we could decide together, and, you know, even with new people coming in, I mean, those two months are, learning curve's pretty steep, so it gives people kind of an idea to, to settle in and think about these things, so.
Yes, Councilmember Edwards.
I, I agree with that. Every, every day is the Year of the Child in my house, and recreation, and everything else, so, um, I, I think that, I like having it done in May, and we just, I mean, I, I agree with, in spite of what Fred says, um, I do know that it's the blueprint of what the city manager does, and, um, I'm very happy with the goals that we set, and I, I'd like to do more with them.
Okay, um, well, if, if you were to do this at goal-setting session time, it doesn't necessarily mean that you would only have that particular designation, if I'm hearing this correctly, about your goals and who you're funding, it just means you would run it through the year in many different efforts, is that correct?
It would just be part of the, the consideration, is all.
Yeah, well, I'm seeing, so the goal, we have, we have our goals, and that sort of outlines, you know, the things we're going to discuss, whatever, and it seems like that this sort of theme of the year is even a little bit beyond what the five of us do, but it's about, you know, recognizing organizations, parties, you know, maybe a, a small part of the community fund, you know, being a highlight or something, but it's, it's kind of like, uh, something beyond this room that gets people thinking about it, whereas we still have, you know, our goals to get to work on. But I think that in this, in this, talking about those things, that it naturally brings up ideas for things bigger than us.
All right, um, I have to say that July 1 is really the beginning of our fiscal year. I mean, you know, it's not as if we're not doing this mid-year, you have a mayor for all year long as well, so I think that, um, I could, I could support the proposal that are, at our goal-setting session this year, that we would go ahead and in a democratic process, be casting forward these considerations, and then determine within our goal-setting session, what our focus would be for the following year. Now, do I have consensus for that?
Yep.
Yes, and, and city manager?
I, I, I just want to follow up on what Councilmember Hunley said, because I really do think you captured kind of the essence of what, you know, what my thought was with this. Um, and I, and I, and I also think, you know, what it, what it was with Mayor Protam Agamonte, his original thought was that, you know, that the theme, or the Year of, is, is bigger, you know, than just this room or the council goals. I think the council goals is just a setting to determine what that is. So, you know, I, I appreciate your comment, and thank you very much for it, because I think that really did capture, you know, the council goals is, is a forum, for a lack of a better term, for discussion, and because you don't want the theme to just be the council, I think you want to put it out there to say, you know, "The council has determined that, you know, that, that it is the Year of the," insert, that whatever, you know, Year of the, for, you know, the Year of the Child, and you hope that the organizations and everyone else, you know, in the community embraces that for the year, but it's bigger than the council. Your goals are your goals for the council, so, but it seems like a good time during council goal-setting that you would have that discussion. So you're going to discuss your goals and submit your goals, and at the same time, each of one of you, e- each one of you could submit your thoughts on what the Year of would be. So, thank you for letting me, you know, kind of tag into that, but I, I really do think you captured the essence of kind of what that might look like, where I think you would want, I, I, I would think you would want as council to set that, but you would want everyone else in the community to kind of adopt that as their own, the other organizations as well.
So, in, in, in a way, you're kind of describing this as being an umbrella, all right? And then through the year, you would work through, um, that as a filter?
Correct.
And, um, therefore identify opportunities in which to enhance that particular concept?
So that other organizations, if they're doing something, they, they also might tag on to that as well, and say, you know, their theme, you know, also encapsulates that Year of.
Okay, that's great. Now, do we, um, do we have consensus on this? Do we have a, um, you know, do we, I don't think we need a roll call vote on this, all right? So.
I will incorporate this as part of your next goal-setting session.
Okay, that's great. So we've given direction for staff, and that finishes item 7C. Um, we have, uh, City Council as successor agency, I, there are no items for this. Councilmember Reports and Comments. Do you have any reports? Yes, Councilmember Cook?
I just want to state that I went to Sonoma Clean Power, and we had the supervisor from Mendocino come down to talk about, um, possibly, uh, if there was a merger between Sonoma Clean Power with Mendocino, um, Just Talk, um, and kind of gave a report on, on what, what they were thinking and other projects. And also, I had the library advisory committee meeting, um, and I wanted to ask Mayor Gallion possibly to put on the agenda, um, where the library could come in, possibly our commissioner, um, Joanne Sanders, and kind of go through some of the updated stuff that's happening at the library. It's, uh, pretty exciting what, what's happening there. And I want to thank you and the library also for, uh, moving forward with fixing that wall. I, I know that it's, uh, in progress, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Um, next reports?
Uh, no, no report, but speaking of the library, my kids were there and purchased books today. Um, they're very happy. I, I spent half an hour going through a quiz for my kids, and, um, just a shout-out to my son Sullivan, who will be five at midnight tonight, and, um, happy birthday, Sullivan.
Councilmember Hunley?
No committees, but I did go to the, um, chamber breakfast this morning that recognizes the top tax generators and biggest employers, and also the, today it was the long, longest members of the chamber, and I think it's really cool that so many of our heavy hitters and with businesses are still locally owned and operated, and I think that's pretty special.
Okay, and I guess that leaves me, all right? Oh, Agri, Mayor Protam Agamonte.
Thank you. Uh, I, first of all, I'd like to say on my ride home, uh, from Santa Rosa, there was an absolutely gorgeous rainbow. People had stopped up and down Highway 12 just to get pictures of this rainbow, so I'm sure it'll be somewhere on our Facebook. And it actually, I, I was so excited about it, because this world we're in is crazy, you know, elections are ratings games, it's just awful what's going on everywhere, but people actually here stop their cars and take pictures of a rainbow. And I, I didn't, I should have, I'm sorry, I, you know, all I can do is remember the beauty of it, so I just wanted to share that with, uh, everyone. And I attended, I couldn't go to the chamber breakfast today, because I went to Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting at an ungodly hour at 8 o'clock, and, um, I just wanted to mention that people have said, um, that the recycling at Safeway is gone, so it just seems to be something that's happening. I shared that with the city manager, and I do have a list of centers that are now throughout S- uh, Sonoma County, and, um, there are just, some of these are privately owned, and we have no, you know, the municipalities have no control over that. Also, we have, uh, people who attend, come here to speak during the public session, and I just wanted to have people here, and I believe that they've been told, that by coincidence, Mayor and I sat with our city manager to discuss the state of emergency. We went by every, through every detail of that, things that we thought we could do, be part of, and by coincidence, I actually think that same day, uh, our city manager received, uh, correspondence from, uh, aide to Supervisor Goran, that she will be having a, she refers to it as SV Connect, and that's, they're going to be discussing housing options, tenant protections, and homeless services on March 16th at 6:00 PM at the Altimira School, Middle School, and, uh, they're going to change the subject every time they meet, but I think this, if, I believe the group knows this, and I encourage them to come, and encourage others to come. So we'll be able to actually, uh, discuss, this is exactly what we wanted to do. Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, I attended with, uh, Councilmember Cook, the mayors and council members meeting, um, in Sebastopol. It was a lovely venue, and, um, David was quite relieved that we didn't get lost, so, um, we had a, we had a good time. Uh, we are, um, actually changing the structure of our meetings for the, uh, mayors and council members, and we will be going to four meetings per year. Um, the next one will be, uh, I believe, uh, here in, uh, Sonoma, at, uh, Ramakins, but, uh, details to be announced later. And so, um, we will meet May, and then I believe our next one is August, and then November 17th, all right, um, if we need to. So the structure is to go ahead and give you the ability to go to League of California Cities, so it's, um, it's alternating, and you can go to mayors and council members. In addition, we'll be changing the structure of how we run a meeting for mayors and council members, for those who have been there, and, um, uh, the mayors will be giving a list of accomplishments of their particular cities, and it'll be published. And the information that comes to you, should you choose to select to go to a meeting or not, you'll have that information available, and also you'll have what will be discussed at those meetings. But they will broaden the topic of discussion to a longer length of time, and a question and answer period. So instead of having a presentation of maybe 15 to 20 minutes, and 10, 10 minutes, uh, question and answer, it might go as long as an hour, and this would be 45 minutes, and the purpose of this is to go ahead and have more interaction among council members, and to take some of the large issues come forward. And, uh, we, we had a dearth of, uh, information that was given to our, um, speaker city, which will be Rona Park, so this is, um, pretty, pretty monumental change in the meetings themselves, and this is meant to go ahead and, uh, put a higher focus on, uh, the key topics, so that, uh, we'll have more information going out to more people who are attending from different cities, um, in order to stay connected. So I was very impressed with that. Um, it was a lovely venue in Sebastopol, and, um, we had a guest speaker, Mr. Marx, who talked about what was happening with ABEG and MTC. So, um, there's a lot of information that is coming forward about changing their governance model, and this has a lot to do with really financial impacts that might happen in Northern California and throughout the state, so. So, stay tuned, we'll be having more information on, on that at a later date. I went after, we did the proclamation for Rise Up for Violence Against Women. I was invited to go over to the health clinic, where I attended a, um, a ceremony that went ahead and banded women together and men, along with some of our county agencies that were represented, to go ahead and give the benefit of people local here, so that they wouldn't have to travel up to Santa Rosa, where the ceremony was actually done on February 14th. It was very moving. The proclamation that I gave here, I delivered there, and it was simultan, simultaneously translated into, um, Spanish for the community that was there. And there were tears in the eyes of some of the women that were there, it was very moving. And I just want to say that, um, with, you know, all with you, you know, I know each and every one of you were there with me when I was reading that proclamation, and it meant so much to the, the constituents that were there, the moms, the people that were dancing, and the fact that someone cares. And, uh, I was very moved myself. The chamber recognition this morning was, wow. Boy, has this chamber changed. I was very impressed, I spoke to this during my segment. I just am so, um, appreciative of the fact that this is such an inclusionary process. And the recognitions that were done, you know, for the businesses that are part of our community, for the longstanding of years, the 93 years for, you know, the Eraldi business was just phenomenal. To think about 90 some years, and the, a lifetime worth of, um, commerce on the plaza. I, I was, um, actually quite transcended by the, um, spirit and the vitality in that room. I think that Councilmember Cook and Councilmember Hunley would, would concur with me that this was very moving. Theirs was, I believe the designation was the Year of Partnership, is what the chamber has embraced. And I can tell you that from what I have witnessed in the past, and we actually did get out a little bit earlier, that this was, um, a wonderful process, and I felt that, um, people were rightly deserving of all of these awards, and that they actually had their day. And everyone was present for them as they received it. So with that, um, I will go ahead and say that I attended, um, Sonoma County Transportation Authority, Regional Climate Protection Authority meeting. And, um, I just wanted to say, stay tuned, because we, um, are going to have some incredible activities coming forward from our Regional Climate Protection Authority. So that's all I can say at this point. And with that, um, I hope everyone had a wonderful Valentine's Day and a holiday afterwards. And I guess we go on from here. City manager comments and announcements, including announcements from successor agency staff.
Just a couple announcements, we have three vacancies on the Traffic Safety Committee. Two are regular members, and one is an alternate, and applications will be accepted until 5:00 PM on Wednesday, March 16th. And we will have a future recruitment for an alternate on the Design Review Historic Preservation Commission, and so we will be advertising in the very near future. We don't have a deadline established on that recruitment yet. And we have a couple future meetings that you can mark on your calendar. Our April 4th council meeting will be held at the Veterans Building, and will start at 4:00 in the afternoon. And we're starting this meeting early. It will be held to one business item for discussion, and that is the recommended modifications to the city's mobile home rent control ordinance. And on May 23rd, we will be holding the council goal-setting workshop at 1:00 in the EOC. And on June 9th, we'll be holding the budget workshop at 1:00 in the EOC to, um, discuss the draft of the 2016-17 Operating and Capital Budget. And also just to update the council, we, uh, put out a request for proposals for the Special Events Manager. That, um, deadline closed today, we have received, uh, several proposals we're really thrilled about, so staff will be evaluating those proposals, and, um, ultimately bringing back a contract for award of that position to the, at a future council meeting, so we're real, really thrilled. We're moving forward with a lot of projects, so that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Our next item is, uh, comments from the public. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comments section. I would like to go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Lori Weber Hutchinson. Thank you, and have a nice evening.